Good evening. Calling to order the July 18th, 2023 Columbia County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I'm going to ask Commissioner Skinner to open us with the invocation, please.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many blessings that you've given us, Father. We pray, Father, that you will protect those that protect us, those that are in your services, firefighters, policemen, protect their families, Father. As we go forward in this meeting, Father, we ask for your wisdom. Decisions we make are hard, and we have to consider everybody for the benefit of the county and our citizens. Father, most of all, we want to be pleasing to you. Pray these things in your holy name.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
But the record show that we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the previous meeting of June the 20th, 2023, in your package. If they meet with your approval, accept the motion to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting as presented. Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Gary. Johnson, we've set on our agenda.
It's ready for your approval, Mr. Chairman.
You have one special recognition, a declaration of Augusta Christian Schools, and Mr. Connie Malir is going to handle this.
As we read the proclamation today.
Oh, Lord.
Good-looking group of folks.
Awesome.
What a good-looking group of folks we have with us tonight. Congratulations from Columbia County. Wanted to read this proclamation so that everybody here can hear how proud we are of these students. Whereas Augusta Christian Schools was founded on Christian values in 1958 and offers a sound academic education for K-3 through 12th grade, as well as a learning support program for students with special learning needs. And whereas athletics has always been a fundamental aspect for training of the mind, body, and character, and Augusta Christian athletes have excelled during the 22-23 school year. And whereas Augusta Christian athletes compete against member schools within the South Carolina Independent School Association. And whereas the Augusta Christian Boys Basketball Team earned the honor of being the 4A state champions for the second year in a row. And whereas the Augusta Christian Baseball Team won the 4A state championship as first since 2007. And whereas the Augusta Christian Cheer Team's hard work paid off as they took the state title in the non-tumbling competitive division. Therefore now, we, the Board of Commissioners of Columbia County, do hereby recognize the accomplishments of this outstanding athletic program and congratulate all the coaches and athletes and wish them continued success. Congratulations. Now, I believe that we have been working on getting a sign on Fears Ferry Road at the state line to commemorate these three accomplishments. Would you like to congratulate these?
Sure. For those who don't know, I'm Les Walden. I'm the head of school over at Augusta Christian. We are very thankful to be here tonight, to be recognized. Thank you to the commissioners here that chose to do this. Thank you for what you've done to do this. The students at Augusta Christian School make up students from a wide area. However, the majority of our students do come from Columbia County. So these are your neighbors here. These are the students that helped make this county what it is. We thank you for recognizing us here tonight, and congratulations, everyone up here.
We got a couple of cheerleaders, I mean, yeah, cheerleaders in the back. I'll get back behind her.
Thank you.
Oh, my God. We have one other. Recognize.
It's later on.
I hope he's not here.
Mr. Chairman, I've completed my part of the program.
You have.
What a great group.
My commissioners, bear with me. Lots of pieces. The commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Each item on this agenda has been through the necessary committees and received the necessary votes to be placed on this agenda. So if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept one motion to approve them all.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Unfinished. Kenner, you have the first one?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the second reading of Resolution Number 23-35, Amendment to the Fee Schedule for the Planning and Service Division.
Second.
Slott. This is the second reading, Resolution 2335. This is creating some new fees that were created by House Bill 1405. We have some new processes we have to follow when it comes to temporary use authorization, provisional home occupation, and variances that will require us to buy signs to place of the subject properties, as well as place legal ads in the paper. And these fees here will cover those costs.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Aries.
Yes, sir. Item 12A1. I make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from RA to, yeah, okay, I picked up the wrong one, excuse me. I make a motion to approve the request for the applicant to withdraw without prejudice. RZ 230603.
Second.
This was a request to rezone from RA to CC. The applicant wanted to put a Circle K gas station there. They have requested to withdraw that, which means they are not moving forward the project.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Yes, sir. We have item 12A2. I make a motion to approve the request from the applicant to withdraw without prejudice. File VA 230604.
Second.
This was variances associated with the future construction of that Circle K, which they did withdraw. No need for variances.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Beth Cunnell. Hey, the applicant has withdrawn, but if you would still like to speak, you can. Okay, then we go. Who's the next one?
Item 12A3, Mr. Chair. Right? Yeah. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to Section 90-139, buffers and screening for property located at Tax Map 060, Parcell 1697, to reduce the required buffer, subject to the conditions enumerated in the June 15, 2023 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
This request is to vary from our buffer requirement. It requires a 30-foot buffer between a R2 zoning and a PUD zoning. This is for a piece of property located literally inside the Bartram Trail Golf Course. There's a small portion of land that ties Stable Bridge Way to that piece of land. They're looking to develop it and put homes on it. In order to build the road to get to that property, they do not have the land to have a 50-foot right-of-way plus a 30-foot buffer on both sides of the property. They're asking to reduce that buffer down. This buffer reduction would only apply to the 400-foot section of Stable Bridge Way crossing the narrow part of their property. Buffer will be required around all of the homes. 30-foot buffer, if they do masquerade, they have no intention of masquerading this time, but if they do masquerade, that buffer increases to 50-foot automatically.
Can bring it back to us to masquerade?
They don't have to bring it back to masquerade, but if they do masquerade, it triggers a different set of buffer requirements. There you go. So.
Would it null?
Come back.
Avoid this variance out if they did do that or not?
Yes, sir. The only variance they're asking for is from here to here. You see, it's a very narrow piece of land. The right, the road, the lines here are actually the curb and gutter shown, not the actual right-of-way. So the right-of-way is 50-foot wide total. The 50-foot wide will fit inside of that. I do have some concern that they'll be able to get all the utilities in there. Of course, that'll have to be worked out when they do their site plan. But this time, before they move forward on their site plan, they're asking for a reduction in buffer from this point to this point, that section of road there. This is, just for your information, this is a green on the golf course, and down here you have a couple of tee boxes, golf course. Golf course actually has an easement to cross this property with the cart path in this location.
Is the applicant here? Hi, I just had a question.
Well, sir, just state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Tyler Finley, 8219 North Crossing Court, Forts, Georgia.
Hi, I was reading through our packet, and I came across a letter from Jason Page, the owner of Bartram Trail Golf Club.
Yes, ma'am.
And he indicated that he was in agreement with the arrangement, that there would be installation of a bathroom at the location. I just want to make sure that was correct.
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Aries.
Next, we have item 12A4. I make a motion to approve the request from applicant to withdraw RZ 230602 without prejudice.
Second.
The applicant was requesting to put a bed and breakfast on this piece of property. He was actually going to combine five parcels into one, create about a 14-acre parcel, have a seven-bedroom bed and breakfast, six bedrooms for rent, one for the owner or the attendant to occupy. However, the applicant has requested to withdraw this application.
Questions? There's a motion, second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Aries.
File 12A5. I make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from M2 to CC for a portion of the property located at Tax Map 036, portion of Parcell 034, subject to the conditions enumerated in the June 29, 2023 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
This request to rezone from M2 to CC, if you look at the screen here, this line here is to be abandoned. Currently, this whole piece is the parcel as it sits today. Currently, the restaurant building sits on the site. It's been vacant for over a year, so therefore it triggers having to be brought back into compliance with the current code. They're asking to rezone this portion of the property from M2 to CC and combine it with this piece here. So this line here goes away. It'll be a companion variances that'll come up next if you were to move this forward.
And currently, as it's zoned, a restaurant cannot operate?
Correct. Correct. Because it sat vacant for more than 12 months, it now has to come into compliance.
How long has the restaurant been there? I know it hadn't been open in.
Burned down at one time?
That's the one next door.
Okay.
This is the Maryland's Fried Chicken.
Ooh.
Been there a long time. I don't remember it not being there.
A long time. COVID, I think, got them, and they closed down during that time.
Right. It'll be, we refer to it as Maryland's Fried Chicken, but it's actually a different name. It won't be Maryland's Fried Chicken.
Any other questions? The motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Next is File 12AC6. I make a motion to approve the request for a variance to Sections 90-133, parking, 90-135 signs, and 90-139 buffers and screening for property located at Tax Map 036, Parcell 012, 013, and a portion of Parcell 034 to allow for the existing sign to remain, existing parking lot to remain, to permit a natural buffer in lieu of a structural buffer, subject to the condition enumerated in the June 29, 2023 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
Go back to the actual photograph.
Right there.
Photograph, on-ground photograph. You have several variances here they're asking. So the first one was the, in the parking lot, as you see here, the parking lot's a mixture of dirt, gravel, and some asphalt. They're asking to retain it as it sits now versus a lot of money into this. They're looking at a three-to-five-year plan to do some significant work to this area, so they didn't want to build a parking lot and tear it all back out, so they're asking for that to remain as it is today. They're asking for the existing sign to remain. They will reface the sign with a new name, but the actual sign will remain in place as it sits today. And they're asking for the buffer between the two CC zoning and the M2 zoning to reduce the structural buffer between CC and foot, natural buffer. I had that straight. If you go to the arrow photograph, zoning lines on it, lot lines. This, this. There you go. So this piece back here would require a larger buffer. They're asking to reduce that down to a 10-foot natural buffer versus a structural buffer. And caveat to this, these variances apply to the site as it sits today. If they were to do anything to the site, it would have to meet current standards. So if they add on to the building, make the building meet current standards, if they build a parking lot and meet current standards, or redesign the sign, other than refacing is one thing, but lower it, raise it, move it, bring it to current standards. So basically, if you were to approve these variances as it sits today, anything new would have to meet current standards.
And again, they, owners have plans to develop the whole area there. Very, not very near, but future, we'll take care of everything up there. Is that correct?
Correct.
Do the adjacent property owners have any comments?
In person. They have a whole lot of concern.
Any other questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Aries.
Next is File 12AZ. I make a motion to deny the request for a rezoning from R2 to CC for Tax Map 074 and a portion of Parcell 046.
Second.
It was a request to go from R2 to CC to allow for a service station with, I'm sorry, convenience store with gas pumps. There's a variance that could go along with this as a companion if it.
Any questions?
There was a request to withdraw, just so, on the record.
Second?
Second. I seconded it.
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. All through the next one.
Yes, item 12A8. I make a motion to deny the request for a variance to Section 90-147G, can be use provisions for Tax Map 074 and Parcell 046.
Second.
Questions? Favor? Anybody want to speak? Denied.
Item 12A9. I make a motion to approve the request for a major PUD revision for property located at Tax Map 082, Parcell 526, subject to the conditions enumerated in the June 29, 2023 Planning Commission Report. Approved.
Second.
Mahi. Record, sir.
Mahima Janovic, 3713 Westlake Drive. Thanks for the opportunity tonight. I've attended several meetings, planning and zoning, and in front of y'all on this development. Thirty-year resident of Westlake. Past Westlake board member for six years, who focused on all the development that surrounds us, Westlake, to make sure it matches the quality of what we look for. I'm citing a document that is planning, is in the planning packet, called Declaration of Easements, Covenants, and Restrictions, 11648, pages 14 through 35. There appear to be specific items in conflict. Number one, prohibited use 8.11, page 11, clearly states no massage parlor. Clearly states no massage parlor. That is part of the request, this zoning. Part B, my second objection, stormwater drainage is cited in the same document, 7.22, page 10. The developer is asking for an additional building, increased parking, and a resultant of reduction in green space. The stormwater Reed Creek issue has been a hot topic since its development was announced, and it's also been a hot topic in front of Columbia County Commission for over 25 years. This is a five-acre site with no retention facilities whatsoever. This increase in impervious surface generated my request for Columbia County Engineering to run new calculations based on these changes. This was also requested by the Planning Department. I have not heard anything since in talking with planning if the developer has provided water quality and water quantity treatment plans. My point here is also this, if we're not concerned about the stormwater runoff from this five-acre site directly into Reed Creek, then why did we include three items in the recent splosh that is costing several million dollars? In addition, the DC Lawrence Development Site across the street was approved by y'all, and it requires a retention pond. No difference in geography, same distance to Reed Creek. Downstream flooding from this five-acre site has the potential to impact private property downstream. I'm not against the development. I am against not having stormwater regulations that other county sites have to meet on this site. In the planning document, my third point, in the planning document from June 29, the developer states he has a shared parking agreement with the Prompt Care. Planning furnished the document. The reason I point that out is he cites this document very quickly in favor of his development, but at the June 29 Planning Development Meeting, the Planning Department said this document is between the developer and the seller. So it appears we use the document if it supports our request, but if there's things in the document that are not in his favor, such as the massage parlor, we don't look at the document. Finally, the planning signs that were posted in Westlake. I had asked for one sign to be closer to the intersection, and the reason for this is 60% or so of the traffic entering Westlake makes a right onto Westlake Drive, and the sign was not visible. I did talk to the Planning Department about this. Well, following the June 29 meeting, this sign was pulled. So Westlake residents did not have an option to still research what was going on, pull up the June 29 Planning Meeting notes, and see. I do have a suggestion based on this. When we place zoning signs, even after the zoning meeting has occurred, the next step is the Columbia County Commission meeting. Well, the majority of people don't understand that. So I suggest you put a top on top of the existing sign that says Columbia County Commission Meeting, July 18. That would tell the person reading the sign that there's a next step to this process. And it's not a dead issue. Thank you.
Mr. Schlott, there is the runoff going to be on the site.
No retention?
He's deep into it, but has to be something to have runoff.
Yes, sir. So during the original listing design that was done, they did have a pond, and I'm not going to be perfect on this, but I believe the pond was somewhere in this area. Don't hold me to that. Actually, we got a call from a resident of Westlake, a well-known engineer in the area, who suggested that the developer follow the 10% rule, which is part of our code, which basically they look at the basin, they look at how water's flowing. So as the, as the properties upstream are retaining water and releasing them, properties lower down are trying to flush that water, get it out of the way. So as the upstream properties start draining, they're not hitting that water at the same time. Basically, you're trying to flush the system in stages versus flushing it all at once. So they looked at that rule, they analyzed that rule, they submitted all the documents that supported that rule. So at this point, this is a concept plan, asking for a change in their PUD. If it's approved, they will then have to go through designing, go through the whole process again, and prove that that 10% rule will work based on the new design. We don't have their design yet. We don't have contours, we don't have topo, we have no idea of elevations, we don't know materials, we don't know pipe locations. There's a lot of stuff we don't know, so we can't run those calculations. It's up to the developer to hire an engineer, and that engineer will then run those calculations, provide that information to us.
But we were comfortable in the runoff on the, what's already been approved, already under.
Correct. It met our requirements. Correct.
There not a stormwater pipe, basically, that flows straight into Reed Creek?
Not directly into Reed Creek, no, sir, but it does cross under Inverness, is it Inverness Way? Crosses under there, there's a, there's a creek, a stream, I don't know what you want to call it, that leads into Reed Creek. Reed Creek is not directly there. It doesn't tie directly to it.
The Reader's Digest version of the splosh money spent on Reed Creek?
Certainly, we've got several projects upstream. Mr. Titus has been working on getting those designed, several of them designed right now. I believe you have three ponds in design right now.
Tell everybody who you are.
Kyle Titus, county engineer.
Kyle Titus, county engineer. Um, that's correct. We have three projects on Reed Creek right upstream. Immediately, immediately upstream behind Lakeside High School, we have the Petersburg Tenshi Pond. We're looking at revamping, uh, working through the core process now on it. We also have Mullins Pond behind Mullins Crossing, which we are modifying, uh, doing a retrofit on that pond, adding several acre feet of storage to that pond, along with a smaller pond off of Butterfield Court. It's a Tenshi Pond where looking at acquiring some additional land and expanding that pond. In addition, we, we have some splosh money, uh, to stabilize Reed Creek right at the mouth going into the canal. And Bel Air Commons, uh, is a large subdivision off of Bold Evans Road. Do we have a, a lot of, money set aside in splosh to revamp that entire neighborhood storm drainage system along with the road infrastructure, um, there. So those are the, the three big projects off the top of my head.
Also working with GDOT on a pond, Riverwatch, just, um, down from Mullins Pond, behind the old food line, Hobby Town now, that dumps directly into Reed Creek. I think a retention pond there to, to catch a lot of that water off that developed site, off the food, hold it. DOT is working that one.
That's correct. And the last thing I'd add is, is we would look at the 10% rule here if they applied for it, but that's for water quantity and volumes. They would be required to meet water quality regardless of quantity or the runoff.
As far as the covenants go, those covenants are private. As he stated, they're, they're between property owners, not something that we enforce. So if there was an agreement between two property owners, or a buyer and a seller, that massage parlors are in there, that's between them. That's not a, not an issue we can enforce. Uh, we just wanted to clarify that.
Question I have. Also, in the packet, it says applicant is requesting outdoor group fitness activities and fitness facility.
Right.
Code section 90 dash 97 allows indoor recreation, uh, as limited use in C1, but this is a PUD, right? So what are the uses in most of them? But then it goes on to say in code section 90 dash 147 states that outdoor activities or training are prohibited. Our code for.
For straight zoning?
Yes, for C1. What is the zoning for? I know it's a PUD, but what is the overall C1, C2, C3, C, what, 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 what?
Probably. Had to break it down to a zoning, but being a PUD, it writes, it's, I mean, basically it's writing its zoning for itself. So that's the opportunity to put uses together that typically don't go together.
And then outside of code? I mean, if the code states that it's prohibited?
If it's prohibited in a certain zoning, C1, this is not a C1 zoning.
Oh, it's not C1, but if the use is in there are C1, are you not operating under the C1?
No, sir. It's, it's, it's operating as a PUD. If it, if it was straight C1, it wouldn't have a, it wouldn't have a PUD zoning. So the PUD zoning is basically you're writing your own narrative for the.
But if all the use is in a PUD or under what would fall under the category of a C1 throughout any, all code that goes along with C1? I'm just trying to clarify for myself.
If you go to a PUD, yes. If we, if it had been straight C1 zoning, it'd have been a, it'd have been a different ask today. But this is a PUD where you can't mix different zonings together. That way, I mean, a PUD can have residential and commercial.
Do we have any C2 stuff in here? I mean, when you're looking at the uses. So if I want to get around code and I've got enough, uh, acreage, I can put it under PUD around the codes requirements?
Not to get around a code, it's to create a code. Allow you to do a, a mixed use development versus a straight zoning development. Like Riverwood Plantation is a PUD. It allows commercial, it allows off course, it allows residential, it allows a liquor store, it allows all that to mix together in one zoning package, what they did here.
Arguably, it could be more restrictive based on the narrative. It just depends on the, the way that they present that narrative. I think, to your point, Mr. Vice Chair, there may be times where they try to maybe use that narrative to make it less restrictive for them, but essentially, when the commission approves that narrative, you, it could be more restrictive if, if that's what, you know, the commission desired. You would not approve the PUD unless you agree with the narrative.
And this PUD was approved.
The, the, the PUD was approved, but when Westlake was approved, that's a long time ago. It's been modified. Original approval was with part of the actual Westlake.
Right. Would the applicant step forward and allow me to ask a question? Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, Rafi Pasali, 3808 Inverness Way.
Thank you. Um, as one of the items that had been on the original application was taken off, and that's the pedestrian connection. Can you talk about that very, very briefly, since it's not on there anymore, but tell me how that came about?
Kind of the whitened out area right at the top middle was a.
You can touch it.
Uh, right here, was a pedestrian gate that was removed. Um, I guess to back up a little bit, this isn't the most, um, real estate friendly plan. It's not one that maximizes square footage or maximize return or anything. I thought Westlake would want an access there. A few people did not, so it was removed. It, the majority of the, the site is leased. It isn't going to affect my rental rates or really anything, so we can cross that bridge later. That, I mean, that was it. Um, I thought it'd be a safer way to access the site, uh, but we can go through the guard gate just as easily.
On, on the workout area or whatever that's going to be, the training or whatever you call in it, uh, are you renting that space?
It, it's not added to the square footage, but it's basically here. Sorry, that's a bad circle. But this building is a gym, and they just want.
Where, where's the gym?
Uh, here. Indoor, outdoor, on the, on the days it's not 100 degrees, indoor, outdoor, uh, places to workout. I mean, it's, it's, it's a boutique gym. It's not a high intensity or volume of people gym, uh, but just private classes. Just the access to be indoor, outdoor.
Would there be music outside?
Uh, probably limited music, I would say.
Own music.
Okay.
Doesn't it say no music?
I believe that, that's the whole, across the board, not just for the outdoor. I think it says no outdoor music.
Was it amplified music?
Yeah, it's amplified. I think it says amplified.
Whatever.
Maybe it did. I don't, I don't know.
Sure. Whatever it is, I mean, I'm not trying to break the rule, so, uh, we'll, we'll do that.
Well, I guess that's how you wrote it.
Yeah, sure. Um, this is a tenant. This isn't my business. I do occupy two businesses in this development or will. So a lot of it is I'm speaking for people that are not in the room, so they might be better equipped to answer some of these questions.
Will there be exercise equipment out in, um, on the outside perimeter of the building?
I don't believe so, no. They, they currently operate a business in Richmond County, trying to get them to open up a second location in Columbia County. They do not have any equipment outside in Surrey Center.
There's, there's, uh, no such activity will take place in the rear parking area facing the Westlake Residential Development, and no music of any kind shall be played during such activities. Talking about the outdoor training. Outdoor activity and training.
Okay. Might be a little harder to work out, but that's okay.
I, I hear you.
Yeah. That's fine.
What the code folks coming up issuing violations?
Yeah, um, uh, yeah. So that's, whatever the, it says is fine.
For the massage therapist, so that's a current spa, therapeutic spa that offers facials, and they just would like to add the service of massage therapy?
They currently offer massage in their Surrey Center location. Um, again, there's two points on that. I don't classify them as massage parlor, so I think, I think Westlake POA also does not classify them as a massage parlor. Also, it's not buyer and seller, that agreement. It's me and prompt care is the agreement. So if they're here saying that they don't want a massage parlor, I could hear that, but they're not.
What would code classify? Code classified as massage jar.
They're going to perform massage, hands-on massage. It's got to be classified. Have, have conditional use for massage, got to have massage operator's license, have to follow everything.
I would say the essence of the rule wasn't to ban massages. I think everyone understands what it was. It's less than 10% of their business, but that's another example of me speaking for a tenant who's not here. It's not my business.
Please understand Rafi, it is your.
Sure.
Your development.
Yeah.
This is you.
Yeah, I'm not operating that business. So I, when I said less than 10% of their business, I'm guessing. I don't, I don't know exactly what percentage of their business, but they are mainly facials, creams, they sell retail products. It's a, it's a spa.
Questions?
What happens if this is turned down tonight? How does that affect?
Um, the original one that's approved is, uh, slightly smaller, slightly less parking. We would just adapt to that.
Less square footage also, or?
Uh, I mean, this plan is about a third of the original approved square footage. Uh, originally, this was 145,000 square foot development.
Originally, this could have been a grocery store.
That's what it was meant to be. Hey, I saw it on the screen earlier.
That was the original PUD.
Correct.
From day one.
And I, and I shrunk it, and I maybe shrunk it.
The PUD now, this increases, increases your square footage.
Lightly, yes. This was the original plan. Um, I guess the original detention or retention was right here. Um, so this is what I purchased and was approved to build. I thought that this wasn't the best for Columbia County. I thought this current plan is a lot better. Maybe I shrunk it down way too much. As far as the demand on just dirt has been pretty good. We've leased up a lot of it. So I think we were approved at what, 38,000?
I think that, I think it's in there also.
All right, this was 111,000.
Yeah.
And then I think the approved is 38, or changing it to 42. Maybe I'm off on my numbers. This is approved and, and one on the right. And that's really just what the tenants have asked for as far as space wise. I think food trucks wasn't great idea, or it wasn't approved or something, so we, we're just adapting it to fit what would be approved.
Parking grass or something, so that would take away from runoff and so.
Yeah, a lot of the concrete areas are trying to make it as much grass as possible. Um, yeah. There's a, there's a pretty good buffer around the back that is there for listing buffers and, and also the topography in the back. The parking agreement that was earlier mentioned is with prompt care, so basically I have a right to park on prompt care's parking, they have a right to park on mine. That's another just private agreement between two property owners.
More questions? Thank you.
Yep.
I will say, it is good work because if you, if there was a grocery store there, you'd have big truck deliveries in the middle of the night, then you'd really.
And we, we don't have any national, all be located.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion is second on the floor, or any debate, any other questions? Motion is second on the floor. On favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, motion carries. I believe you're back up, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, next item 12 A10, I make a motion to approve the variance to section 90 dash 98, list of lot and structural requirements for property located at tax map 062, parcel 0861, to reduce the building setback along Gateway Boulevard to five foot from the property line for a proposed canopy.
Second.
This is a Chick-fil-A out here at Gateway. They are looking to redo their circulation of traffic. You'll see they're pulling their drive-through lane out here away from their parking. Right now, it goes through their parking, and they're asking for a five-foot building setback variance. It's 10-foot required by code. They're asking it to five foot so they can extend their canopy here uh, to provide additional drive-through lanes and cover for employees to stay out of the weather, sun, rain, sleet.
All the landscaping and trees and grass and that, all of that, how far down is that going to go on the picture? Can you show that picture, Patrice? Is that on here? I don't know what.
Five foot, there'll be a five-foot setback still required, so they'll still have room for, for their, their landscaping. Our right of way is somewhere in this area.
Right.
Five foot off. They're, they are going to lose some landscaping.
I will say as a, a frequent flyer to this location, it is very congested and, and that would be a good improvement to access to the Chick-fil-A and as well as maneuvering through the parking lot. Any comments from the adjacent property owners?
Questions? Motion is second on the floor. On favor, raise your right hand.
Uh, item 12 A11. Uh, I make a motion to approve the variance to sections 90 dash 139, buffers and screening located at tax map 061, parcel 020M, 022A, and 022 to reduce buffers as shown on the provided site plan prepared by EMC dated April 21st, 2023, subject to the condition enumerated in June 29th, 2023 Planning Commission Report.
Okay.
Part one of requests for this parcel, they, uh, are looking to install this drive here. They are tying into Lewiston Road. Lewiston Road is here. This location here is dictated by a break in the median out here on Lewiston Road. Uh, in order to make that tie-in work, the buffer you see in the, in the shaded area here reduces down to zero in order to make that tie-in. They're asking for that buffer variance. Sewer, actually, the closest sewer is actually across the street, across, uh, in the line parking lot. We're working right now. That was supposed to be needed to the county. However, the developer never needed to the county. We're in contact with them, working on having the plats prepared, so they will need that to us. We, we do need that to be needed to us, if this project goes or not. Um, they do have an easement agreement with neighboring properties to get access to our sewer when it becomes our sewer. If it doesn't become our sewer, then they have to go get easements from everybody else as well. But it is something we do want. We, we do want to maintain that sewer. There's several people tied to it.
We're saying the site will be on sewer at some point.
Yes, yes.
Beth, did you want to speak on this? Motion is second on the floor. On favor, raise your right hand.
The, uh, second part of the, uh, variance, I make a motion to approve the variance to section 90 dash 147, uh, G can be use provisions for property located at tax map 061, parcel 020M, 022A, and 022 to allow for 24-hour operation of a proposed convenience store with gas pumps.
We've had.
Approved.
Second.
This is a request to have 24 hour, 24-hour operation at this location.
Beth?
Uh, good evening. I'm Beth Connell. I live at 2538 Falling Branch Lane in Evans. And, um, I am speaking out against the variance request on the 24/7 operation. Um, the county ordinances have been put in place, and companies should be expected to follow them unless there's a clear reason not to. Um, I did not comment in opposition to the, um, the removal of the buffer because there was clearly a demonstrated reason to have it, and a variance on there makes sense. Um, I struggle with variances where they are just a complete elimination of the ordinance, and this is what this one is. Uh, the company is requesting to be allowed to operate 24/7. Um, on the criteria, the Columbia County's criteria for evaluation of variance proposal, it states, I'll just have to take my glasses off to me. Um, "The special circumstances or conditions are such that the strict application of the provisions of this chapter would deprive the applicant of any reasonable use of his land. Mere loss of value shall not justify a variance. There must be deprivation of beneficial use of the land." Um, I don't believe that by closing during those hours that we deprive, um, the, the establishment of the use of the land. And in fact, I would argue that Lewiston Express has operated on the opposite corner in full compliance with the ordinances for a significant amount of time, and therefore they were able to make themselves a thriving business, so. And therefore they were able to make themselves a thriving business. So there's really not a question on whether or not you could be, um, you could survive economically in that condition. Um, I believe that the ordinances should be followed and if companies want to establish a business here, they should be required to follow our rules. Um, I do have a, a very grassroots petition that went out. We have um, probably about 85, 87 signatures on it. Um, we probably could have gotten more, but it was extremely hot. And so getting out and canvassing, um, I was pretty much sweating all over papers. So that's what we got. But um, but I think it also speaks that people don't want this. So that's it. So I respectfully request that you deny the variance.
Sure.
Questions, dear?
If the 24-hour um, variance is denied, what time will the gas station close? Eleven.
Open at?
Six.
Body being before that or not, or what?
The, the workers can be there. It can be open to the public.
Right.
Ready to open that.
Questions, comments? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed?
See, we got uh, item 12, A12, I make a motion to approve the conditional license, encroachment and maintenance agreement with the village of Jones Creek.
Second.
This is a, an encroachment agreement, maintenance agreement with the village of Jones Creek to allow them to make repairs to and keep an irrigation system located in county right-of-way on Colony Drive. Uh, this was in place prior to the widening of Furious Ferry Road. During the widening, we had to make utility, utility relocations. There was some damage to the system in county right-of-way. Uh, they've requested to have this encroachment agreement put in place so they could make repairs to that system and leave it in our right-of-way. Does require them to maintain it, requires them to be responsible for it. Have to make repairs to it if we notify them that malfunctioning. If we damage it, they know they are responsible for making repairs back to it since it's on county property. Only applies to Colony Drive. It does not apply to Furious Ferry. They will have to work through the state. I've tried multiple times to talk to the state about it. I'm having zero luck getting anybody to answer my questions. There's a abbreviated process for an HOA to go through versus the processes we go through. Uh, I will keep trying, uh, help them out with that. Y'all approve this, I'll, I'll continue working. Have to answer any questions.
You'll have to go through the state to get state's approval.
Correct, correct.
This is only for the in, interior part. Is there, uh, is there um, a representative from the HOA here today?
Been in communication by email and, and person quite a bit.
I do them.
Did invite them to be here tonight if they wanted us to speak to you, half of the neighbors, but uh, felt that they could sit back and let me do all the talking, I guess.
Well, this had, this had gone through um, my committee and I had asked for it to go to the um, the debate agenda just so that we could have on the record, you know, and be sure they were very clear on all these stipulations of if they put it in, in our right-of-way and it gets damaged, it's not, it's not the taxpayers going to repair it and, and all the, the details that go along with it. So hopefully they'll put a copy of this with their HOA documents and 10 years down the road when there's a new HOA board that has, didn't know this went on or has forgotten or something's damaged and it comes back around, that this will be very well documented of the agreement between the county and the HOA.
They're very aware of the requirements they have because they didn't really like the draft of what I wrote. Making them responsible for everything, but they realize that.
It is a privilege to put their equipment on, on our right-of-way and we, the taxpayers will not take responsibility for any of that.
Motion is second on the floor. Motion carries. Motion on the next one, should we bring applicant up to clarify? Or question on what, what you couldn't do?
The applicant here?
Rose. Come forward.
Michael Robertson, owner of Ridge Road Bean Tackle.
Question about whether you could.
What, what exactly are you, Kurt, Mike?
Sir.
Where, where do you wanna go by? Kurt or Mike?
Uh, yeah, Kurt's fine.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
What, what, what all are you actually asking for? You're asking for home premises, consumption of?
Uh, beer, wine and distilled spirits.
Distilled spirits?
Yes, sir.
Asking for retail sales of?
Of beer and wine.
Just beer and wine.
I'd like to note for the record that that's not what the application. Am, am I misreading?
I look at it. I, I read.
He did this right.
Yeah, no, it's no problem.
I, I read retail consumption of beer, wine and distilled spirits. Wanting to sell beer, wine and, and liquor for people to drink at your location.
At the restaurant, yes, sir.
You wanna do retail package dealer where they can take beer and wine and leave with it.
Right, like just, you know, somebody wanting to buy a case of beer to take to the lake or something like that.
So that, that thing is where, part of our problem. Are we good to talk about this now? Um, section 6100, person holding a license to sell distilled spirits for consumption on the premise, you're asking to do, shall not be permitted to make any package sales of alcoholic beverages. If you consume liquor on premise, you cannot sell beer and wine to go.
Okay.
It kind of throws off your application a little bit.
But, alright.
As beer and wine on site, he can s-
And this is.
Serve liquor.
Uh, you know, I, I'm not sure about that. I just, I asked.
We're trying to make sure this.
Trying to help you.
We're trying to make sure it's correct and right and.
It's very clear. It says distilled spirits, which is separate from beer and wine. Distilled spirits is held in a class by its own, away from beer and wine, so.
So if you wanna do, correct me if I'm wrong, if you wanna do beer and wine on, on premises, you can still sell retail, somebody wants a six-pack to go to the lake.
Right.
They can still do that. A pouring liquor drinks, you're not gonna be able to sell for them to walk out.
And at this time?
With a six-pack.
At this time, can he request to remove that from the distilled spirits portion? If that is what he chooses to do, to remove that from what he's requesting?
He can. So you can push this through, deny it as it's written. You can delay it for 45, up to 45 days to give him time to think about it. If he needs to figure out how he wants to move forward.
What, what exactly you want to happen?
Uh, well, I, I wanted to be able to sell the beer and wine out the door and then be able to pour a um, I guess a mixed drink. If people come up to eat with their meal and wanted to uh, order a drink or cocktail being up at the lake, uh, I, I figured, I was just trying to get the, the license.
I'm with you, but.
So that, that kinda, right. Can't do both of.
Do that if you wanna retail. So you go, you gotta make the call on how you wanna operate.
Do I get the, when you say 45 days, I mean, I just wanted to maybe speak with my wife about it, you know?
We could, we could postpone this till next meeting, couldn't we?
You can. So the code, I'm gonna read the code. I got it pulled up separately so I didn't lose my spot here.
Cause we, we want you to do what's right for you.
Um, at that, at the time of the application is presented to the board of commissioners or is designated committee. The applicant may appear, present matters and support. On hearing all the presentation, the board of commissioners or is designated committee shall take action on denying or granting application or deferring action for a period not to exceed 45 days in order to obtain further information. So I think that's what you're asking him. You're asking for more information. Think you wanna take.
Next meeting.
So, yeah, I, I would just say it's all very.
Now, or you can.
Wait two weeks.
Okay, um, so I guess what I'm asking here is I can, I can do distilled spirits and beer and wine in the restaurant setting without selling it to go. Or I can decide to do uh, beer and wine on the premises and then I can sell beer and wine to go.
Correct.
But cannot pour distilled spirits.
If you take liquor completely off, then you can do on-premise and off-premise for beer and wine.
Okay. Or, or I could just decide to do all, uh, all on the premises.
That would be what you would be requesting and then that would have to be.
Okay. But that would have to be a, approved. This other could happen.
It all has to be.
It all has to be.
Same time.
Alright, um.
So you'll decide which, if you don't wanna decide on the fly right now, you might want to have us give you two weeks.
Yeah, alright. Um, yeah, two weeks isn't, isn't gonna make or break me. So yeah, I mean, it's fine. I'll just, so I just go home, think about it. Who do I, come back to one of these meetings or?
Y'all back up next in two weeks.
I, I, if you don't mind, I'd like for you to work with Paul and Aaron, wherever you're hiding.
Yes, sir.
So Aaron is who you applied, you did your application with.
Yeah, yes.
Ms. Hall, let her know how you want to mend your application. Ms. Barbara will get it. He'll. Make sure he's back in front of this body.
Yeah.
Work through those.
Okay, no problem.
Robertson, I ask a, another couple of questions. Um, does Ridge Road not have an alcohol license currently? Why are you here asking for alcohol? Like, you don't, don't you already have one?
Well, we, we operated one for, uh, we had one since 2019. But uh, we, it's some sales and usage tax. And uh, went through a county change and things like that. And uh, it actually got taken. So we uh, we paid that amount and all the penalties that was with it. So.
And that license was in your name or a partner's name or?
Yeah, it was me and another, a partner at that particular time. But he's no longer involved in it.
But this, but this one would just be just you by yourself?
Yes, that's correct.
And you've taken care of all the penalties?
Yes, everything's been taken care of.
So you're clear with the state?
Clear with the state of Georgia.
100%.
100%.
Okay. I'm sorry, Doug, but I.
Having a drink, uh, water. I think we're clear. So we're gonna postpone till the.
Okay. Okay. Alright, thank you.
You, you're good with that, right, Kurt?
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm good with just reevaluating which, which direction I wa, I wanna go, but don't have to go through this again just with them.
No.
It'll have to.
We, it will come before us in two weeks.
Okay. So be back here in two weeks after we make a decision on which route we want to.
Right. We just work with the hall and they'll make sure it's buttoned down for you.
Sir, okay. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Chair, make a motion on item 12 A13, uh, make a motion to postpone uh, this item until uh, August 1st, which is the next meeting of the board of commissioners.
Second. Raise your right hand. They're postponed.
Yes, sir, we do.
Somebody else gets a turn now.
Uh, yes.
He was taking the whole meeting over.
Seemed like it.
I make a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing Melvin Gibson for 50 years of service to Columbia County.
Second.
Mr. Gibson has, has announced his retirement after 50 hard years of the county. So we're asking for this approval and next Tuesday committees, we'd like to bring him here.
I asked, did it go to the, is it next week that's uh, public service? Okay, I'm sorry. I thought it was theirs next week. I'm sorry. But I wanted it on mine. Thank you.
So uh, if you approve this tonight, we'd like to present this to him at next Tuesday's committee. Bring him in, some of his coworkers to celebrate him giving his life, literally his life to Columbia County.
Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Onto legal matters.
I make a motion to approve form of the development agreement between AU Medical Center Inc. and the Board of Regents.
Second.
Uh, what?
Huh?
Be amended to not the form, but actually approve it. We went ahead and, and got AU and Georgia Regents to sign. I just got the signatures. So we don't have to just approve the form. We're gonna approve this document.
I think we amended that motion. I think the next one is the form of the intergovernmental contract. But the first one is the approving of the development agreement.
So I make a motion to approve the development agreement between AU Medical Center Inc. and the Board of Regents.
Second.
What did you just?
So, all of this, the, the next three are about the Columbia County Hospital. Okay. Um, and really, they're all sort of interrelated. In fact, the third one, uh, you know, it's a little bit double duty. You're approving the form of the first two. Um, but also in that third one, you're doing some other things. I'll get to that in a minute. The first one, uh, the reason we're doing uh, the approval of that and not, not just the form of it is this is the agreement with AU and Georgia Regents for the development of the hospital. Uh, we went through a whole lot of negotiations on this, uh, making sure that the, uh, the county uh, was in a good position for the entire development and, and how it was financed, did all that. Um, and so this is that, that base document. Uh, this is sort of the document that sort of sets the stage. Um, it is conditioned upon Wellstar signing before it, any obligations on the county takes effect. You can go ahead and sign it, approve it. Uh, you have no obligations under it until Wellstar, uh, their deal with AU happens. If it doesn't happen, we're out. Um, that, that's that agreement. Uh, that next one uh, is you're approving the form of the agreement uh, for you and the Columbia County uh, hospital authority that was just created. That's a document that's necessary for, by state law, that, you know, the C O N and uh, you have the hospital authority, uh, that will be um, issuing the bonds to the uh, the hospital to treat the urgent care uh, of the county and the citizens of the county. Um, that is, uh, that document. Third document approves the form of those two and it also says y'all have the uh, ability to sign any additional documents necessary to close on the transaction to close the bond. That will come up later. Again, that happens post Wellstar agreement being approved. Uh, so none of this really, you're doing an approval now. The reason you're doing approval now is you're trying to move the, the process forward for the bond validation. That's public gets to have a, a say in whether or not it's a proper funding. Get that in place. Then you have a Wellstar closing and then immediately they can go in and start working on financing the hospital and getting the hospital going. Now start. And for the, that time, just to make 100% sure, Wellstar didn't happen, this doesn't happen.
There's a timeline, ain't there?
Correct. There are deadlines, there's timelines. We also have a, a bond counsel here, uh, that was uh, available. If there's any further questions on it that he can come up and speak to. That is, that's the gist of the documents.
We've got a vote on the first one, right?
Right. Vote on the first one.
Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
I make a motion to approve the intergovernmental contract with Columbia County Hospital Authority.
Form.
Here's the form.
Form.
Questions? Raise your right hand.
Make a motion to approve resolution 23 dash 42.
Second.
Again, so what, what that is doing is approving the form, what you just already approved, but then it further gives county manager, the finance director, me, chairman, uh, the ability, the authority to and have the closing at which time that can happen, which, after the Wellstar.
Questions? Ever raise your right hand?
This time, can I, can I say, please, right here? I just wanna commend uh, Chris Driver and Scott Johnson on the work that's been put in project so far. Uh, it's unbelievable the amount of time this thing has gone on. I think Scott, you're the only left survivor of the oh, of the whole field that's been here since.
Chris and I started, I guess.
And Chris, you, you were from the very start. So when things got to wiggling and, and all of that, y'all made sure that everything was on track and what the intent was and making sure of the citizens of Columbia County, getting looked out through the whole process. And I, I just wanna commend y'all and thank you for the tremendous amount of work. and I, I just want to commend y'all and thank you for the tremendous amount of work.
Thanks, sir.
Held it together when it was not, not even, not off the rails, or not on the right, it was in the ditch running through the field.
We, we could have lost this hospital several times, yeah.
That brings up a good point that I should have mentioned before, our, our only obligation on all these bonds, backstop for twenty percent, not giving cash, we're not giving taxpayer money, plus the other parties, uh, default, which.
Mr. Driver's done an outstanding job of, of building in safeguards.
Not from business.
I just, I just felt that was the appropriate time to, to put that in there, so.
Thank you.
I believe we have a couple of executive session items.
I make a mo- I make a motion to approve agreement in quick claim deed with David Sandback, Jr. as executor of the state of David Sandback, Senior, and Robert Sandback, Parcel zero six one zero three zero D for the purpose of widening and approving.
Second.
This is a settlement that we've, we've had, we've worked on this for many years, Mr. Driver's kind of pushed this one forward, so we finally came to an agreement where we actually bought and closed a gas station, got rid of one.
It was twenty-four hours too, wasn't it?
I believe so.
You're right, we're out running out of gas.
So, we, uh, we did make a, an initial offer, the, uh, two point four seven nine billion, if we settled at two billion eight hundred fifty thousand, so we will, we will make that claim up.
Can I ask a question right here, this was for the easement and all to get in, but the building and the property is still?
Still is, so, we basically bought the business because we had to close his business because we bought all of his access. He no longer has access to Lewis Road, so totally shut his business down by doing this. You know, made whole for business loss only, but he does keep land, he does keep building.
I do think it's appropriate to point out, though, that if, once this is done, if we need to move forward with any sort of code enforcement on that building, with it being right there, I think we would absolutely move forward with that. Uh, we're not just going to allow that building to, to sit in its current state forever.
Motion is second on the floor, all favor raised right hand?
I make a motion to approve twenty thousand dollars to Jason Stock, Stonehocker, Parcel zero seven one zero zero four eight, ten thousand dollars to Scott and Angela Woodhams, Parcel zero seven one zero zero four U, fifty-four thousand dollars to Woodruff Landing Association, Inc., Parcel zero seven one E zero one, fourteen thousand one hundred dollars to Alexis Palan, Parcel zero seven seven zero one three G to obtain right of way and or easement for the party McMahon, widening project.
We're moving along, we have about fourteen parcels left to go on this, we're getting close to going to. Getting close on this one.
Second, all favor raised your right hand?
Make a motion to approve fourteen thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and four cents, Parcel zero seven one zero zero two J for additional moving costs.
Second.
One where we actually had to relocate a property owner, we had to buy their entire house, we have to use the federal Act one buying a house, we have to, we have to pay for all their expenses, and this was the cost to actually move them to their new location.
Questions? If you ever raise your right hand?
Make a motion to approve sixty-six thousand dollars to Larry Morris, Parcel zero zero property fire station.
Second.
This is, we, we've been working on this for quite a while, we finally got to a, an agreement on it, this will be, um, at Build One Road, out towards the end of Build One Road, this, I believe, five point five acres that we're buying, build a new fire station, have money in next block.
It's in, it's in the next, it's, it's in, well, it's in the twenty-three to twenty-eight block, so it's in the current block.
Current, the money we're collecting now, so we'll have money later on in, in this, I think it's tier three to actually build a station out of this location.
Had two fire stations that we were needed out in that end of the county, and we, we have acquired the property for both.
Correct.
After this approval.
Correct.
Questions? Raise your right hand?
I make a motion, motion to approve resolution number twenty-three dash forty, declarations are taken ordered by condemnation for a portion of Parcel zero five two one three eight six. Resolution number twenty-three dash forty-one, declarations are taken and ordered by condemnation for a portion of Parcel zero five two 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 nine for the sewer intercept project.
Second.
See, these are both HOAs, hard to get the correct amount of signatures in order to sell lands, we have to go through the condemnation process in order to acquire the property.
Questions? Raise your right hand?
Make a motion to approve the governmental agreement with the Development Authority of Columbia County regarding Parcel zero seven two five five two.
Second.
I'll take this, this is, this is a, uh, agreement with the Development Authority to allow the county to work with the Development Authority, allowing them to sell a piece of property for the purposes of, uh, a specific project that they're working on in Evans County Center.
Any questions? If you ever raise your right hand? Motion carries? Alina here?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All favor raised your right hands? We're adjourned.